What's called the budget needing to back to order?
I know. I was doing that yesterday.
With Susan? Do you have some updates?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just showed up.
Where's that come from?
Hello.
You look awful chipper to be the third day.
Oh, it's the last day.
So I'll say first of all, I forgot to update the date in the lower left-hand corner, so if you're somebody that I know generally copies of things, you can tell which one's which. I tried to put the today's date down in the lower corner.
It makes big difference to me.
But really, the biggest change yesterday was just the fact that we would duplicate items in the general fund. It didn't necessarily make anything else increase-decrease because some of those things were already there. As you can see, that the general fund estimated ending balance right now is bumped up by about $2 million because a lot of those things that we took care of at facilities yesterday where they were in two places. Even though we did add back some things, like popper attorneys, there were some other changes here and there, the net balance came out to around a $2 million change for the general fund. There are still some duplicates out there between, especially public safety lit and jail lit. Debbie said we'll talk, we'll talk about those today, get some of those cleared up to make those a little clearer. Because there was a little bit of improvement on the jail lit side, but not a lot. So most of the other ones were very small changes, if any, so there wasn't a lot of shifting, nothing really deleted, just duplicates removed. We don't have lit numbers. I got this morning, checked it at six o'clock. Oh, maybe they're there? No, still not there. So if we get it by the end of the day today, we can put it in. And also, after whatever's decided today, I can send Debbie and Karen a PDF of this, and then they can send it all out to you, so you can remember where you're standing now before you pick up again later.
I also received an email from Ryan Holbrook this morning, and he is hoping to have our ten neutralization numbers back to me this afternoon, which will in turn, hopefully, I can give Susan's CNAV numbers by person to week, so.
Because that's the other problem right now. You had reestablished the, or we should have reestablished the rate on the Q and Bridge fund. Currently, I have the rate applied to the current NAV for Q and Bridge. We would want to apply that rate to the new NAV, but likely what that will do is shift levy away from the general fund. So that's because that becomes a decision of how much levy you're going to give to Q and Bridge ultimately. So when we start talking in December, or September, I'm December. September, you can decide exactly how you want the levies allocated, you know, between adoption and when the 1782 comes in, we can make sure everything is advertised high enough to accommodate whatever you decide to do. But also, we would expect an increase in CCD levy as well. That's another one that's a rate-driven fund. It's independent of your other funds, so it's not going to take revenue away from anything. We will just likely be adding revenue to CCD. So if anything, we would be making the bottom line a bit look better. You might have potentially more there. I don't know for projects, I'm not sure how much, just will depend on what the NAV comes in at.
And public safety lit is still showing any balance that's negative. Once we determine where you want those communication officers, that's 850,000 that could be moved from PS Lit, or that's the case where we're balanced.
We're balanced.
Yeah.
And I know yesterday, we did some backup analysis math on the jail lit that puts about 1.6. That's it.
I think I have some of those.
How some of them.
About how some, yeah, determining how some of those things turn out, yes.
And I know we didn't, I know we had dupes, but we're still, okay, all right. I'm good. This makes perfect sense to me.
Some of those other things were finalized.
Right, right, right. Nope, I got it.
Do you guys have any more questions?
Any questions?
I personally don't.
What's the rainy day fund balance?
4.7, 4.8.
And that's within the line item.
It's 1190. It's not on here.
It's not on the budget come there. You're not budgeting anything. We don't budget rainy day. We don't have to turn it into the DLG, so it's not on any of our.
And what percentage, how do we figure the percent? Is it like?
To put into rainy day?
No.
The, the balance, like where, what, how we would add?
Remember, we were at like forty, 39%.
We were at, first day, we were at 50.
I mean, right now, you're at like 48.77.
Yeah, we were at 53 the first day.
So.
Because things got changed. So, I mean, and I don't include rainy day in this balance, so that would be just an additional.
Four million.
So if you, four million, so then you would say that that would be, if you combine that with what we're estimating right now, 13.4.
Seventeen, eighteen million.
Seventeen, so it'd be seventeen million divided by 25, so you're closer probably to like 20, or 75 to 80% operating, if you wanted to consider that as part of what you have available.
Sort of what I was getting at, yeah. Thank you.
And I would, I've told, when I've met with some of the other council members, I would like to see you guys take a look at rainy day this year.
Right.
With the high balance that we have, I, we have not contributed to rainy day for a long time to actually leave it, let it grow. I think that's something we need to look at doing.
Right.
I think we've moved some monies around, that we are able to do that, even with putting some of our cash balance in county general towards the projects.
Right.
I still think you have enough of a reserve that you could look at, at doing that.
Right, that's why I brought it up. Thanks.
Any other questions or thoughts? I see Jipper is out there, so she's ready for.
It's not yours.
I'm sorry.
Do you need copies in line, I'm assuming?
Yes. I don't think it's in here.
Thank you.
Can you hurry?
Is this in our binder?
It is not.
Oh, okay.
And I'll explain that why.
Okay, if that's all right.
So, good morning. I'm Jennifer Lawrence. I'm the Director of Boone County Solid Waste Management District. We are a special unit of government dictated by Indiana Code, so not truly a county office, hence why I'm not in your binder. But with Indiana Code, they say that we have to have a binding review with the county council, so that's why we present to you each year. So before you have the 2025 proposed budget, right in the beginning, we have revenue, and we're estimating revenue at $567,800 for 2025. Again, we base this off of this year's income, and obviously, we know Boone County is growing just a little bit, so that's a good thing for our revenue sources. But we do still try to be very conservative when we're estimating those values, so that number actually could be higher than what we're presenting. But with that revenue, we are presenting you a budget of $565,856, so it's a balanced budget. Just to give you a quick overview of revenue, if you have trash hauling service at your homes, you pay 40 cents a month on your trash bill. That comes to the solid waste district. We have public-private partnerships with all the haulers in Boone County, and even though that full 40 cents actually doesn't come to the district because the haulers keep 10% of it to cover the administrative costs of billing and collecting those fees for us. That's the residential side of it. We do have a fee that comes off the commercial and industrial side of trash hauling, as well as we have clean fill tipping fees. We only have two sites in Boone County. There's actually a tipping fee collected, and that's where permanent disposal occurs. Again, here in Boone County, we don't have landfill, so this is only clean fill. So, you know, cornup asphalt, those types of things, concrete. And then we do do solid waste hauler registrations. Again, that public-private partnership, that's actually a commissioner program. We have an operating agreement with them, and it's a commissioner ordinance, but the solid waste district handles the registrations on their behalf. And then we do collect interest. So that's really our revenue sources. Do you guys have any questions? Or I don't know if you want to go through the budget or not, but.
Who actually oversees you?
Um, we, thank you. We do have a board, a seven-person board made up of all elected officials. It is dictated in state statute on who sits on that board. We have all three commissioners. We have county councilwoman Bridget on our board now. We do have the mayor, and then we have two representatives from the town council in Zionsville because of population reasons.
The mayor of.
Lebanon. And the mayor of Lebanon is actually appointed by the commissioners. They can choose anyone from any of the municipalities, but because of the new census and the population change, Lebanon wouldn't have been represented on our board any longer, so the commissioners thought that was a good fit, so.
Thank you. That's what I was wondering, is like, how is your board appointed? Like, who makes those decisions? But thank you for that.
Really, it's all dictated, except for that one seat is by the commissioners. Everything else is specifically in the IDA code.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, we could go through the budget. If you got any questions on the budget, I mean, her board is the only one that really can change the budget all on her side.
They did, and our board did bless it back in June at the board meeting. I say bless it because that's really, I mean, they approve it on a monthly basis once we actually start paying out of the budget, so they do dictate that, but you guys are really the vote to say yes.
You don't, I see vehicles, but you don't have trash trucks or anything to.
No, we have one, four transit van that we utilize our education programs and things out of. No trash trucks.
I didn't think so.
I only ride on the back of those three days.
I appreciate.
And I do have an award on my desk that says I'm the trashiest lady in Boone County.
I think you should bring that next time.
I'm happy, I'm happy about that.
No need to.
I was just going to say, based on the time I've been on the board, I think you guys do a great job, limited staff, and you get so much more awareness out in the county than people realize, and I just, I appreciate what you're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And having a supportive board does help that.
I've done. When you said what you did about the budget stuff, I'm just asking the question, not to, I don't want to teach you anything at all, but could this board actually change something on your budget?
You very well could say, I want to reduce this line, I want to reduce that line. You can do that.
I just never understood that in the past, so that's.
But with that said, those funds would then simply go right into the solid waste district because, again, for Indiana State Code, those collected fees have to be used for us.
Yeah, exactly.
So you can, you can reduce it, you can increase it, you can do whatever you like, but those funds still stay with the solid waste district.
Okay. No, I just didn't know that at the base.
When there's an environmental cleanup that has to take place, the company that's charged with doing that, responsible to take care of that cleanup, does the solid waste district receive any dollars from there?
Yeah. We're truly on this all waste hauling. Now, we do handle household hazardous waste with our tox drop events, but that's truly us collecting from residents. Those aren't spills, those aren't emergency situations, but no, we don't collect or pay for any of those cleaners.
But it's fair to say that you guys, as a board, ensure the safety of everybody here in the county with respect to the moving of any solid waste that's coming in or going out of the county?
Well, I would certainly say that we, that's a good reason to register the haulers, so we do know who is servicing our area, and that does help us keep tabs on the ins and outs of the trash. But protection, that's probably a little bit of it said, but the education part we do of it, that does help protect our, you know, so people are handling the chemicals they have in their homes, handling medications that, you know, could be misused in our county, things like that. So I think we do make a difference in that regard for protection of the environment and the public.
Do you do a tire recycle?
In the spring, part of our tox drop collection, we do have a tire recycling, and actually, we just received a $10,000 grant from IDIM this year. So over the next 18 months, I'm going to host at least three additional tire collections. We have one coming up September 21st in advance. It's open to all Boone County residents, so if you have any tires, that'll be open to you collecting.
How big?
Yeah, they had to change a rule when I bought in a big tractor tire one time, so.
Well, with IDIM and our grant, there are no limits, so. But first come, first served.
Jeremy gets a few out of his road, back road out there. We get tires out there all the time.
Yeah. And the highway department does a phenomenal job with cleaning up the tires out of the roadside ditch, and most other variety of things, of mattresses, appliances. And we do partner with the highway department. Each year in the spring, they do allow us to host at the tox drop for our spring event, which is very much needed. I don't need to have 900 cars driving through Key Banks parking lot. Our office is not real good for that. So it's imperative we have it at the highway department. And then on the flip side, at the end of the year, whatever's left in our dumpster line item, as you said, we'll have $5,000 there. If that's not spent by the health department, then we actually pass that on to the highway department to help cover some of the fees for their cleanup efforts throughout the year on those roadside ditches.
Whereabouts will you have it be in advance?
It'll be right across the street from their town hall, where, if you're familiar with our recycling drop-off spot is, it'll be in that same lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe it's 103 South Main Street. I just did the flyer yesterday, so. So yes, please bring lots of tires that day. I know, I know what I'm asking, and that's why there's limits, because I didn't think there were tires taller than myself, but there are, and Kenny had them.
Any other questions?
Does this, Debbie, is this a vote to improve her budget or actually?
Just a vote to acknowledge that you have, that she.
A motion that we can resume with solid waste management district budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
The Department of Boone seconded to acknowledge that solid waste district management budget. Is there any further discussion? All who are favored, should I say, and I?
Hi.
All closing time?
Thank you all very much. If you have any questions, anytime, let me know.
Thank you.
And thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome, Jennifer. Good luck during that, I mean, football season. I'm not a I fan, but good luck to yourself.
You can be.
Hey, I'm orange and white, sorry.
There's a really cute left tackle, but he's like second, third straight.
The 71.
All right.
Sure, yeah, 71.
Thanks.
Highway, there it is.
We'll go ahead and.
Fifty-nine. No, that's hell, I'm sorry.
At the highway.
We'll go highway for budget first?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting. Joel's supposed to be here this morning, so we're waiting for him.
They won't do the ARP stuff.
I can't find it.
Wait, are we getting, are we thirty?
Number, game?
I would.
Yeah, what's the number?
He's got a lot of different numbers, so.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, are we off track?
A little bit. I'll bring my ARP first. So I don't know whether to bring my ARP stuff, bring my budget.
Joel didn't really want to be here before.
I anticipated 10:15. I may have some others coming in here too, but we'll start with what we got, work through whatever it is we want to talk about.
Where do you want to start?
I, well, I can start with sharing some appreciation first. So the last year's budget workshops were a big benefit to the highway department, be able to fill some key critical positions. And I know there was a lot that went into that work, so I want to make sure I say thank you for that. It still has taken a significant amount of time to fill our highway worker roles at the midpoint, but that has been, been help to be able to keep what we did have. So we're still not fully staffed yet. We'll continue to try to work toward getting there, but that was a, thank you very much for the work that was done last year to help us get to this point this year. So as far as where we want to start on the 2025 budget, I've mentioned it yesterday, but I don't know if we've got to figure out the 2024 expenses first, or how we get through.
For food and beverage?
Because all of the stuff in the highway departments are all connected to each other.
Let's just start with food and beverage.
Start with food and beverage. 1157 is food and beverage. Previously, I'll provide details of where we were, what we were planning to spend the rest of this year, show what the cash balance is going to be at the end of the year, be able to include that in the budget for the next year. This year's a lot more challenging because of the changes that were made during the budget workshops last year, food and beverage, what was budgeted, what was submitted for the budget, and then what got changed during the budget workshops, completely changed what food and beverage is going to look like this year. So we have a lot of items under contract that I'm not confident there's going to be enough cash to actually cover the appropriations for 2024. So in order to budget for 2025, makes it a little bit tougher unless we just look at what the cash distribution will be next year based on projections that Baker Tull provides. So we submitted last year and asked for approximately 1.6 million dollars in food and beverage. There's other inputs that go in there, other 4H and EDC. And then during this process, moved an additional $815,000 out of general fund into 1157, which made the budget request 2.6 million. But food and beverage is not going to get 2.6 million dollars. It's going to be apparently about $2 million. Last year's projections are about 1.7. So it puts it about $600,000 in the wrong direction in 2024. So how we work through that, I guess, may impact what we're trying to budget for 2025. So trying to budget in 1157, what, what was submitted in 1157 for, for 2025, the total request on here is 2.134 million, and that does not include the other requests from 4H, ambulance, or EDC. So how that gets handled will then impact the other funds, because the main uses in here are equipment, road maintenance, safety projects, and gravel road conversions. So there's.
That's, that's still your big change in starts.
Okay.
Let's start with.
Before you start, sorry. If you will look, the problem is on road maintenance. There was an encumbrance for 2.2 million. At the end of 2023.
Seventy fifty-three.
Which is what is causing the issue.
So we really need to see with what you're covering, what you're actually going to finish up this year, and then kind of see what next year's, what we're going to bring in, and then that's the only amount that we're going to have left over to actually budget for 25.
So encumbrance was based off 2020 or 2023 expenses. So we had contracts that didn't get completely paid out, and they were, there was enough cash to cover those contracts. We did an over-budget in 1157. Food and beverage, we did not ask for more money than it was going to bring in, so that cash remained in the cash balance to cover those appropriations. Then at the end of the year, when the paving project was complete, crack fill project ended up not getting done and got carried over to this year, those items then get encumbered, and that is based off previous appropriations. So you talk about the council-approved budget was 2.678 million. That's where we have the problem, when you don't have enough cash to cover the, through the budget.
Yeah, we, we get that, but now we just got to get to the point where we, we've got the money in there. How do we get there? And you said that we need to shift something to something.
Yeah, you need to figure out what projects need to be finished for this year, and how much money will be left in that cash balance. It's a non-reverting fund. So even if you encumber at the end of the year, you're encumbering the funds that are already budgeted for him.
Right, yeah.
So it, so you're digging, we're digging a hole every year, so we're doing this.
The hole's getting deep.
Yes.
The cash balance was fine. It was fine.
The cash balance was fine.
Previously, until we made this change, that 2.6 million dollars was applied for 2025. That's what made the change.
So.
Now we have a whole, so as far as what's going to get done this year, it's already under contract.
Right.
So paving project, $3 million paving project is already ongoing. Invoices are already, you know, regularly getting invoices. It is not complete. We will not have all those invoices for another couple of months. So micro-surfacing project is about $400,000. It is also under contract, and work is already beginning on that. We have not paid the invoices for those yet.
Okay.
Can you give us the total, tell us the total?
Yeah. What's going to be totaled? We feel like we're going to be billed by the end of the year.
All of that.
All of that. What, and so then we won't have a cash balance.
No, that's what I'm telling you. Right now, we don't have enough cash to pay the bills that are already, already.
We're obligated to.
Yes, we are already obligated to pay what is appropriated.
So is there anything that can actually be paid tangibly first, something like that, to make sure we can pay out this fund, or whether we've got to move something into this fund to pay it? It's the only other thing we can actually do, is.
You have to have the appropriation someplace else, or you have to transfer it here.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Either way, we get to.
You have to reprove something.
Yeah, either something, something that you have to come up. We'd have to actually move, yeah.
So that's, a follow-up to that is a possible solution. I budgeted it in here in 5900, which is economic development. There's a $300,000, it's one of the forms that you have in there. We did previously budget out of there. It wasn't getting any, any additional revenue.
Right.
But if that plugs the gap for this year, it just creates a gap for next year to fund the road preservation projects that are already planned.
Because as of 7/31, it had 325 in that account.
7/31, oh, July 31st.
Yeah. That's, I was pulling that up actually.
I. I just took the cash balance that was in 5900, included it in the budget for next year to be able to cover road preservation costs, but if it gets used for this year, it'll cover stuff that's already obligated.
We have a problem with 5900, and we're going to have to do some research on this. 5900 has interest that Nikki is pulling off. Nikki's putting interest in there off our county general money. I don't know that you can physically use that on the highway.
Oh.
Unless it's in, unless we move it to county general. And that's, I've got some, I'm working on that. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
So that's going to be iffy as to whether we can actually.
So that doesn't plug our gap, I guess.
No, it doesn't plug the gap. It might, if we can use those funds, but interest, it's tricky.
What else can we use it for?
Well, we'd have to move it back to county general.
County general, okay. We just couldn't.
But that also is going to include getting the treasurer involved, because that's her money that she's.
Okay.
Yeah, collecting for.
So we historically used out of 5900, it was not regenerating. I'm not sure how that money got there, several, that could go or more.
Yeah.
But there was, and it had kept going down, and we were using it for projects until it was going to be zero, and then now there was a cash balance in there. I don't know how it got there, of course, but.
Are you using it for Bridge 192?
Bridge 192, we are closing out. We have, we're finishing off the final right-of-way. They went to condemnation. We intend to use what we have budgeted this year for Bridge 192. But not the additional, we didn't ask for additional appropriations this year at this point to cover any of the shortfalls in food and beverage.
What's the gap needed to close?
Yeah, how much is the, the gap?
Is it 600?
That's my, it's $600,000 short, but just look at the appropriations.
So in order to fill that, that gap there, is, is that something, Debbie, that we could actually pull from this county general, just so that all those bills get, end up getting paid, to make sure?
Yeah, yeah, you can pay for anything from county general, yeah.
So I'm thinking is if we can fill the gap from county general, just.
Pay all your bills?
And then start anew for 2025 and figure out where you need to be, we'll start, we'll start fresh from there, then we have to pull from county general again, to kind of, quote-unquote, reset where you're facing.
So without taking being an additional appropriation in the road preservation in county general for the amount that's going to be short here.
For 24.
For 24.
For 24, then it would make food and beverage not go in the negative, and we could start with whatever's going to be the cash that would be projected to get next year, right?
And then we won't be in this, digging a hole, you know, kind of staying this flush.
Yeah.
Does that make, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So that's where we're going to start. So now what's, what's food and bre, excuse me, food and beverage is going to bring in this next year, approximately?
I mean, right now, you're on track for 1.7 this year. It, like, last year was 1.3, this year it's going to be about 1.7, so maybe 2, 2.1 next year potentially. Again, that just depends on a consistent growth. I, I know last time I was here, you asked me about the employee cafeteria at the Leep, and if that would be, and I have yet to find an answer to that question.
I'm not, yeah.
So.
As of right now, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's still, in talking with some folks, that's still not until 28.
It's going, yeah, it's going to be a possibility. It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be possible, I mean, it would depend on if there's more new restaurants that open, you know, and if people continue to go out to eat as much as they have. You, you just, it's, that's really hard to estimate. So just based upon historical averages, it could go up next year, and then to be flat.
What was that estimate again?
Two point.
About two to two point one probably, it was about one point three last year, you're on track for one point seven this year. And then two, maybe two to two point one next year.
I would say.
Right now, it's on in about eighty nine thousand dollars a month on the average.
Okay. So like, my previous conversation with Debbie, when we found this during, when we were creating this budget forms, I thought it was gonna be two million dollars this year. So if it's gonna be two million dollars this year, that's where my six hundred thousand dollar shortfall came from. It's gonna be one point seven million dollars to be a different amount in the shortfall.
Right.
Well, that's an estimate.
Yes, it's, it's, we're.
Yeah, if, if we could hope that you get a little bit more in the next three or four months, but you can't count on.
If, if we close.
I think, even, even next year though, I would rather try to budget for like a one point nine million potential in this, so like two point one, so we're not.
So we're not creating another gap.
Well, potential gap, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Debbie, you mentioned nine, eighty nine, let's call it ninety thousand a month, that's a million eighty a year, so what am I missing with the?
Well, it, it varies.
Okay.
Each month is different, um, each month comes in at a different amount. The last couple of months have been eighty eight, eighty nine thousand. Don't know if that's because of summer and more people in Boone County, I mean.
But that only adds up, I mean, again, sorry, that's.
I did, I did, when you brought in, I tried to annualize what I thought had come in so far this year. I took what, like, the, June thirty or something, and divided it by six, and then multiplied by twelve.
Right.
The average, that's why I thought I was getting one point seven.
Okay, cause that's different than a million eighty.
But that was what I had, but did you give me receipt wise, when you had the CMP? Like, that was through May, so it was by five times twelve.
That was.
So I, we do need to get an update for what you got here, and see if that still holds.
Cause I actually just got the DLJ report as well, I will.
Okay.
Cause the million.
Cause it would take.
Ninety times twelve is a million eighty, so maybe she had something different.
The million, the million seventy is about a hundred and forty.
That was another hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty, yeah, a hundred and forty one thousand.
Sure, but that's what that would've come from though.
So Nick, just to clarify, you, you base your numbers off of one point seven or two point one?
For my, my six hundred thousand dollar number was based on the two million dollars this year. So budget for next year, I didn't know what to base it on, so I put what we need in here.
Yeah.
Uh, so this shows that we've asked two point one million dollars. Obviously, that's not gonna be a, there's not gonna be enough in food and beverage to be able to cover that around. That was the unknown part of what is food and beverage actually gonna be.
That's fine, it just, just so we can be concise at the time, while she's figuring out what that number is. And the last year, we kind of asked like for a, a priority list of the full two point one that you listed. Not that we're saying that you have to do this, are there projects that could be pushed for a year or two if you had to get to the one point seven, one point six?
Yeah, we, the first thing that has to be cut, as I went through and looked at the list, um, was the gravel road conversions, that's three hundred thousand dollars that we have budgeted on here.
And that's what you were just looking at, that we could potentially put in, that each month would work, whatever that line was.
Fifty nine hundred.
No, this, that, yeah, for next year. So next year's based on the total needs, so fifty nine hundred was used as, hey, here's, there's additional cash available to fund the projects. That road preservation list I gave you of all the different treatments, gravel road conversions is on that list. That would be one of the items that would be, um, first item that had to be removed. We can't take every, our existing blacktop roads, we wouldn't be adding additional blacktop roads to our network.
Right, and how much was that again?
Three hundred thousand dollars is what it was.
So that would take you down to one point eight?
Correct.
Then you would have to find another hundred thousand or so.
Right, every, everything we take out beyond gravel road conversions reduces road preservation.
Okay.
So then you start, you know, roads aren't gonna get their treatment at the time, at best, I would say, so you're seeing blacktop roads.
And I, I just wanted to, I said we were gonna do that, just trying to figure out like what would happen.
Right, that's what we have.
That way you're not fixing these major projects, that would be something that could quit. Okay. Can you, I know they're figuring out numbers, can you just keep going while they're going through this?
Yeah, so, reason we started there, it's all, they're all kind of connected, we have road preservation in very responsible. So NVH has two different kind of groups, if you wanna go through NVH, or bridges, or what do you wanna go to?
Let me just. Hold on, hold on a second. Debbie, are you all, are you all okay if we keep going?
Yeah, it's about one point five, last month was low.
Last one. Where have we run rate of about one point five a year?
Well, no, for the first eight months.
Oh, okay, so then.
One, one to the first eight months.
One, one to the first eight months.
Yeah, so you'll be, yeah, probably.
Lower than we thought, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there could be, but the last, the last month's report, the last EMT goes.
So, one time a few years ago, we, someone gave us like the monthly that was coming in, do we have that?
We have the EMTs, one point six, or one point five to one point six.
So, so sorry, about one point six and you, you say one point seven?
I said, yeah, so there's the numbers, if I had higher numbers January through May, and then something's decreased in July, that, that would cause that to drop off a little bit.
Exactly. Right. Exactly, so it could pick back up again in the last months too.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, that's, it's hard to estimate those.
So we're down one point one, if we look at the two six?
Yeah.
Six, we'll leave it at one point six, just to be on the conservative side.
Be, yeah, be on the safe side.
Okay, so then we're down one, I was, I was using one point five. So we're down a million.
And she all wants thirty thousand, right?
Yeah. So we'll, we'll conservatively plan for one point six million for next year.
This year, this year, the next year.
For, I think for next year, I would almost use this year's number.
Yeah, cause you don't kill for sure.
You just don't know what's on there.
And, and that's mine too, I just wanna make sure we're, we're using one point six this year, then we're gonna do one point six next year, cause that, that number, like what Nick just said, you know, he's using two for this year.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, okay.
And if we're down to one point six is what we're gonna actually collect, instead of six hundred thousand, it's gonna be a million.
Yeah.
So.
And to your, yeah, and to your point, well, everyone, if you, if you get three hundred thousand dollars more, that's that conversion right there, that pays for it essentially.
Okay.
Uh, you wanna move that, NVH, Susan, Debbie, yeah, so.
Well, we haven't finished up this.
Oh, well.
So we kind of, what's that?
Ah, I'm sorry, you're right, go back to, uh, food and beverage.
So we're, even for this year, we're gonna have to be looking at approximately a million dollars coming out of county general, to actually fill the gap that we talked about.
So.
So, so we've got that, so now we're starting over, so we're looking at a, a one point six billion in food and beverage for next year. And then you gotta figure out what, we've got the mayor that's, uh, the twenty five thousand, uh, economic development that's coming out of, of this fund now. So we gotta lower that, the ambulance service of twenty thousand.
We did say yesterday that we approved the contract for EDC, but we did not determine where it was gonna be paid out yet, so.
Right, but that's, that's where it's been paid so far, so, yes. So if we don't pay it out of here, if we take it out of county general, you know, it'd be swapping money from one to the other as long as we know what we're doing. And I was just trying to back into what Nick can actually budget out of this fund, and then the rest of it, we, we'd have to be looking at county general for next year. Or some other lines that we have to see what we've got, so.
Cause you're the, you're the biggest user, he's the biggest user, that would be, right?
Yeah.
Right, yes, so, out of the one point six, if you take the twenty five thousand out of it, and the one fifty four, wasn't it?
One fifty five.
One fifty five, and then the twenty thousand for ambulance service, what does that?
Two hundred thousand total.
So we're looking at one point four is what Nick can budget out of this for next year. So then, you need to show what we can budget out of this, Nick, and then we need to take the balance of, of what you're looking at, and look at putting it in the county general or something else.
Somebody, my quick and dirty math is about seven hundred and thirty four thousand dollars.
That's what you need.
It needs to come out of the, what was been requested.
Right, exactly.
So we would need to lower these requests that are up here for the four items that we have. Equipment, road maintenance, safety projects, gravel road conversions would need to be reduced by approximately seven hundred and thirty four thousand dollars to be able to make us budget to one point four on highway.
Right.
Would it make, would it make?
That just makes sense to move one line.
I was about to say, would it make the most sense just to move road maintenance?
Yes.
And then road maintenance leave the other ones?
It'll probably leave a little bit of wiggle room in food and beverage, yes.
Yes.
Do you, do you want to? So you don't get back to the cash balance of zero, that gave you, where you had some.
Give you a little bit of, would you, would you rather just do that motion now? It's like you know what food and beverage is at.
Where we gotta move the, the.
You can, you can move it to the county general commissioner for type B.
Okay.
What?
O, O six eight.
Six eight.
Yeah.
I, uh, wanna make a motion that we move line zero seven five three from fund eleven fifty seven. Move that line to O O six eight in county general.
You actually need seven zero five three?
Yeah, you said zero seven.
I'm sorry, I started with the first.
Sorry.
Seven zero five three, in its totality, out of fund eleven fifty seven, to the commissioner's budget, uh, line zero zero six eight.
Is the proper move, is there a second?
Second.
The proper move is second, I'll give Jennifer time, and you guys kind of look through everything, making sure before we vote.
So that amount, just for the record, is eight hundred seventy four thousand nine.
Eighty, eighty six.
That's what I'm, is that an eight, eight hun-
We'll round up, eight ninety seven.
Eight hundred and ninety seven dollars.
Where's the eight ninety seven?
That we're moving this year.
They rounded up.
Yeah.
Where is, but, she won't.
We're moving eight hundred ninety seven dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions before we vote?
Dan, John, you guys move.
If not, all those in favor, same way, say an aye.
Aye.
All close, same side?
It was all aye, we, we moved, oh, aye motion.
I seconded.
Thank you.
So, are, are we good on that particular fund now?
Line item, yeah.
Line item, so then we can move to NVH's?
Wait, did we leave four H and EDC in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And I actually get that spun a little bit.
You also left.
I think we left everything in there.
And ambulance.
Everything else is in there.
Yeah, we removed that one line just a little bit.
Yeah, that, that took care of it.
That gave it a little bit of cushion.
Potential.
Oh, I'll pull it.
And plus, well, plus if the monthly's coming higher, it'll bolster a little bit.
What fund now?
You wanna go to the next one?
Yeah.
Um, so NVH funds, uh, those are always a little more delicate thing to discuss because they're a fund and a sub-fund, so.
Eleven seventy six.
Eleven seventy six is the, um, the unrestricted fund that we can pay overhead expenses and other items out of. So motor vehicle highway, it's gas tax, uh, it's distributed from the state on a monthly basis, we've been trending about typical, or we have been, creeps up a little bit. It's about four point two million dollars of the total fund, of that fifty percent has to go to restricted uses, which is in the eleven seventy three side. As a reminder, this is the fund that we moved the employees back into, uh, last year, so we've got all the operations staff back into eleven seventy six. So the main expenses are the employees, and then the fuel. Uh, don't know if you wanna go through any of these specific items individually that are listed in this fund, this is the one that has our overhead expenses, so there is fuel. There's some C D L physicals, uh, that we take care of the cost, uh, some tree and debris removal services.
Did you have anything that was major, like, hey, this is a, I don't, I don't see.
We left, the, the fuel's been about the same, the people, we just left exactly like what was requested at the five percent.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, if we can do more than that, it's great, but, um, I got the tone that that's what you wanted for everybody, um, right, Ken?
No, no, I was just gonna say, this is a, with NVH, this is something you get at highway department tracked very closely. Uh, I know Debbie sees it on her side, but, but this is something that you guys really want.
This is the one that's, it's a little fuzzy, so if you take the report that Baker Tull had to put together for last month's meeting.
Right.
It shows, it's a mess, like, it shows it going negative, and, but it's a fund and a sub-fund, so it's all together. What's challenging with this one is we put the people back in, but we didn't change the distribution rate until a couple of months ago. So their projections based off of the previous distribution and the current expenditures, so it made it go completely the wrong way, we're actually negative in the cash balance in this eleven seventy six fund, but eleven seventy three has more than enough cash balance to make it up. So we're gonna have to make sure we get that distribution right for whatever just gets determined during this budget workshop, so it doesn't look like that. It's very challenging to try to follow how much is going in and coming out, we got a different amount going in than what was anticipated to be going out, so.
I think next year is gonna have to be more of a sixty forty.
That's what I thought.
It was supposed to be sixty seven thirty three, it's about where we would be this year, sixty seven percent restricted, thirty three percent unrestricted. It has to be at least fifty fifty, so we were good.
Right.
But then we were spending it at sixty seven thirty three while distributing it at ninety ten, which is what it was before, so.
And then we did that conversion early, but whether, whether put it back?
Correct.
Okay.
But now it's, it's fifty five unrestricted, forty five restricted, and it can't be like that next year.
Right.
It has to be a minimum of fifty fifty, we got it backwards now, it's trying to fix it this year.
Just to kind of level up.
So we'll have to have a new resolution in January to switch it back.
Okay, okay.
So you need, you need to budget it off of what the new percentages are.
You say you're gonna do sixty restricted, forty unrestricted.
So that's what it was about, what we are this year, changes when you do raises, that's where we get, as soon as you start changing money with the raises, it puts it over on the unrestricted side.
So with your weight, with your increase, you're still okay with what you've shown as your.
What it shows right now, so when you start to talk about eleven seventy three and road preservation and what starts changing, then we need to make sure that that resolution, cause resolution has to change regardless. But it can't stay fifty five, forty five for next year.
Okay.
Okay.
But, so with this fund, uh, is there any questions that we have on the NVH, do you have anything Debbie needs to, do we have?
Eleven seventy six?
Yeah, eleven seventy six.
Okay.
And if we're good, is there a, a motion, whether we approve, uh, fund eleven seventy six as submitted minus salaries? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same way, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
You wanna go eleven seventy three?
Eleven seventy three would be logical next one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, again, same distribution amount of money, four point three million dollars between these two funds. So what we use in the restricted side, so this stuff has to go to construction, preservation, maintenance of roads. Roads are bridges, and you can go to any infrastructure, but at least fifty percent of our distribution has to go to these uses. With this budget that we have submitted, we need to have fifty percent requirement, we've used everything that's available in NVH outside of those overhead expenses for road preservation. And that's what's listed as the anticipating expenditures for, for next year.
I don't have any questions.
I would, yeah, you went over this with us in our pre-workshop, so I'm, I'm good with it.
Do we have a motion?
I move, I move that we approved fund, um, eleven seventy three as submitted.
Second.
It probably moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Question on the roundabout, have we been reimbursed for that yet?
So the, the roundabout, that's at four hundred and one hundred, what you're referring to, is the stuff we talked about before. We have an agreement with the city of Lebanon that our expenses will re, be reimbursed using the road impact fees, that development has not began or has not taken off. There's still an intent to develop, um, so when those road impact fees are paid, our expenses are to be reimbursed. Yes, we have an, an agreement with the commissioners and the mayor and the city council, all signed on on that.
Is the roundabout going ahead, moving forward, if you know?
Yeah, so the roundabout's not because of the development, the roundabout is because of the safety issues at the intersection, and ten percent of all payment, all the expenses, cause it's a safety project. Um, it is still moving forward, progressing, anticipated, uh, letting date, so for construction would be a letting date in February of twenty twenty six is what we're aiming for right now. So likely construction would be later in twenty six, uh, so that's when the, the main part of the expense would be incurred. To this point, we've just paid design fees, ten percent of all design, designs will be had incurred costs for at this point.
I was just kinda curious after John brought it up, when it was gonna be built.
Yeah, we're still moving forward.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same way, say an aye.
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 Opposed, same side, thank you.
Uh, local roads and streets, eleven sixty nine. Uh, local roads and streets, eleven sixty-nine. Another fund that's dedicated revenue collected at state level distributed to the all local public agencies. This one, in our case, gets about, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred, over seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, they're.
Which one?
Eleven.
This one here.
Eleven sixty-nine.
Sixty.
Yeah, eleven sixty-nine.
You think it's over seven hundred thousand a year?
Yeah, it gets, uh, it's in that range, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. We typically budget the remaining cash balance, so we continue to, we budget a little bit more than what it gets due to the cash balance. There's always something left at the end of the year that we don't pay. Um, so we just keep track of that. Um, it's, it's been trending about the same. Has it gone up or down? There's been a lot of annexations, which does change the amount that we could get. But the percentage of what's included hasn't changed that much. So it hasn't really changed our, our distributions too much at all. Uh, this does have restrictions on what can be paid out of it. Um, it's our standard. We can't pay employees. We can't, we can't pay for a lot of other things. We moved a lot of our overhead costs over to eleven sixty-nine when all the MVH restrictions hap- happened. So our repairs, uh, we have increased repairs for, uh, twenty twenty-five. We've gone over the amount appropriated the last two. We woke over this year. We went over last year. We've gone about five years without being able to replace dump trucks. And it's been increasing our expenses for repairs significantly.
Sure.
We've been able to re-appropriate from our salt line, which is good. Uh, haven't had to buy as much salt. So we've been able to move some of those funds to cover the costs of our repairs. So we haven't had to do additional. It's good we haven't had to buy winters, uh, but we're finally starting to see new trucks come in, uh, within the last three or four months. We've taken delivery of a couple of them. We still got several more yet to go.
That were ordered two years ago?
Were ordered two years ago.
Wow.
Been a significant issue trying to keep some of these things. We're, we're paying for stuff that we shouldn't be getting rid of the truck. We have transmission issues and we're starting a lot of miles on them. That's what we see. And that's why we're trying to get to a seven to eight year, uh, rotation on our dump trucks. And right now, we still have twenty thirteen dump trucks, twenty fourteen dump trucks, so we're well beyond that. We were making progress to get there until all of the, the material shortages happened. And it's put a significant burden on, you know, you're running trucks that are eleven, twelve years old. We're counting on them every day. But they, they see a lot of repair.
What's the cost there to purchase a dump truck?
Uh, so dump truck purchases, uh, just the truck itself's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, then it has to be all outfitted with the bed, snowplow, all the hydraulics. They typically get over two hundred thousand dollars pretty quick.
So the average cost about two hundred or a little more?
I'm, I'm ballparking Max handles all of our replacements and all the upfitting. Um, and I don't know, those numbers are off the top of my head. Uh, but there, there's significant, um, expenses that we incur, uh, to, to get them replaced.
Yeah, it's around two hundred twenty.
Two twenty.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have a schedule of replacements?
Yes.
Already kind of a note?
We have a five-year plan. Uh, I think at the five-two when we met.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, and we have a five years of, you know, every, we've got two trucks typically listed on there every year. Some of them, you get, you get a cycle, we can get back to one truck. But when we went five years, four years, we're not getting any trucks. It's now it's got to be about two trucks a year to be able to get some of these back to the seven, eight year rotation. Not so, not so short on our pickup trucks and our lighter duty trucks. It's the dump trucks that get the more miles and the more use. Those are all on the seven, eight year rotation.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this fund? I'll, eleven sixty-nine. Do we have a motion?
Move that we approved fund eleven sixty-nine as submitted.
Second.
Is there probably moved and seconded? Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say why say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, same side?
Let's just go to eleven ninety-one for a purpose of discussion at this point. It's a riverboat is the name of it.
Isn't this one?
I wonder if we're gonna get about three hundred dollars in office.
Every time I ask about this one, we always get bad projections.
Yeah.
I don't know or nothing. It's about where we are now. We have this. The issue with this one is it already has more appropriated than what the cash balance currently is. And this is for twenty twenty-four. The reason this has this appropriation is because we encumbered funds to be able to buy these trucks and equipment. But we didn't end up getting the revenue. So revenue's dropped off substantially from being a, a consistent hundred twenty thousand dollars a year to maybe thirty or forty.
Forty, forty is sharp. It's due to the legislation on how it's distributed to counties without riverboats. And the casino operators are giving more and less is going to non-riverboat counties. So that's why the big drop was like two years ago, I think. Twenty twenty-two is when the legislation kicked in. So, yeah, it was less than half of what you were getting before.
Do the dollars come in from any casino in Indiana?
Yeah, because there's a portion, I don't know the full details of that distribution, but there's, if a county has a riverboat, they and their municipal units get the largest portion of the ri, of the tax fees off the top. Of course, the casino operators keep a portion of it, and then there's a portion that is gone, that goes to all units throughout the state where there are not riverboats. So, you know, they figure out Vanderburg and Dearborn County and Lake County. Those all get figured first. Then the operators get their portion, and then whatever's left goes to Boone, Hendricks, and Hancock and Marshall and wherever else in the state. So it's, and they, like I said, they decrease the percentage for that final allocation to the non-riverboat county units. Okay, thank you.
What, what is the balance of that, with the riverboat right now?
One ninety-eight oh six nine.
Appropriations for twenty twenty-four are currently three hundred and twenty.
So we're not, we're not able to pay that.
Correct.
And, and you will be?
This is, some of this is a Max question. So we, our equipment purchasing, we run through Max handles a lot of it. What is actually been, we have purchase agreements on.
Right.
Versus what is, we're waiting on delivery. Some of those is, like, something may have to not get purchased this year. But then that makes it, what do we do about it for next year?
True.
So is this one, Debbie, right now, I mean, we're not putting anything in it at all anyway. But if, if, after you visit with Max, if there's not enough funds, if you purchase whatever, you're not gonna have to ask for an additional. So.
We usually will know, usually if we're, this month.
Dollars.
Yeah, we don't have it yet.
Right.
So this might be something that needs to be discussed again in September.
Okay.
After we do.
I budgeted nothing for that.
Final number.
Did we get, what did we get last year? Was it fifty-eight thousand or am I not reading this right?
That's probably close.
It's pretty close.
So would we get that amount again?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. They claim it's supposed to be a, a closish amount each year, but.
They have also sent out, the O G F sent out something earlier in the year stating that those counties that physically had a casino now, because they're not riverboats anymore, but would get the majority, then they would.
I guess if we get that, it brings us up to two fifty-six, which then we're only short sixty-three thousand. Right.
For this year.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-four, that, that, all that's in there is new equipment purchases.
Okay.
So with this one, let's visit again in September.
Well, I budgeted nothing for next year.
That's right.
So it's already a C group.
Just need to visit it for.
Yeah.
Max.
So do you need a, do you need a motion to table it?
Just so that, in his office.
No, okay.
Because you'll have that number by September.
You always get the payment in office.
Okay.
So, yeah.
What was it, um, twenty twenty-two is the year they changed?
I think it was twenty-two that the legislation changed.
But it didn't take effect until twenty-three, I believe, and that's how it works.
We haven't purchased anything out of this fund, trying to get it to give up to what we already anticipated. And we were able to encumber last year because we didn't take delivery anyway of the vehicles.
Right.
So we've left the cash and the appropriation, but it, then it didn't grow as much as anticipated.
Exactly.
So that's why it's overappropriated for the amount that's in there, because we didn't get the distribution.
Not the, not the, you got it for next year, so.
Yeah. Did I just put anything? Did we don't even know what's gonna happen? Be able to cover this year. Don't know if we're gonna get enough to cover this year's expenses or not budget anything for next year, which then put the equipment purchases moved over to other funds.
And it might be something too, that you could pay vehicles out of here. Like the two new vehicles you approved yesterday could be paid from here, move them to CCD.
Just the.
Just to kind of move it around and you still, yeah, and then you're not hoping.
Right.
That you're not overspending.
And then that way you know, because the two vehicles are not ongoing, it's just.
Right.
We can use riverboats for that.
So, yeah, so use it each year. I mean, it's silly to sit here.
Right, no.
It has to stay in this fund, and it's used for the benefit of county general, so.
So let's plan on, we visit it in September and know where we're at.
So I, I asked to bring us what we've got already spins, because this was budgeted for this year, equipment purchases. And we need to know exactly what we have to buy, how much money's left out there, and then we'll know what our distribution is. We know what that number is, we need to look for, someone else will be able to come up.
Exactly. So, yeah, we'll do that in September.
Okay.
Next one.
Um, since we were talking about equipment, eleven thirty-eight, uh, CCD.
Eleven thirty-eight.
Specifically a fund that we didn't request anything out of the highway for the last several years until this workshop last year. Our equipment purchases got moved around and there was money in eleven thirty-eight. Um, and knowing that, that there's nothing available with eleven ninety-one, included equipment replacements in eleven thirty-eight. Total amount requested is four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
Top of the second page.
What is?
Top of the second page.
Okay, yeah.
Line ninety-one seven nine.
A hundred.
Okay.
The additional, what's the additional on the floor?
So this was due to the request of not being able to get equipment dollars out of eleven ninety-one. And the issue with food and beverage, we've been getting equipment dollars out of both of those funds. So this was just a, hey, this is an option. I don't know the cash balance of eleven thirty-eight. It was one, hey, we see an opportunity to maybe fund these equipment purchases, so.
What is, where are we looking at of our funding on eleven thirty-eight? Are we, are we okay with the question?
That's one that, right now, you're bu, you're better than balanced on your budget. But we don't know the exact revenue amount yet till we get the M A D. I expect it to go up even a little bit more, so you might have a little more room. Like, right now, it's showing, you're using reserves, but you have pending balance of about three hundred fifty-eight thousand. So you're not too balanced, but you, you're.
Yeah, I'm sure our Nats will go up.
Yeah, you're probably gonna bring in some more.
Guaranteed it will go up, we just don't know.
How much?
How much.
Yeah.
But I should go by, fingers crossed, should go by first next week.
Um, this one's the.
So, uh, the new equipment in CCD or highway, we at least need to have that discussion, whether we go forward with that. And if we do, we need to have a motion for that.
And this is just generally.
Yeah, there's a list of items. Um, some sources come from many different funds to be able to pay for the.
But, but, okay, it's a combination of things.
Correct.
The dump trucks, uh.
Yeah, there's trucks, uh.
Was just a little.
I guess, yeah. So in the.
Can we still pay for, uh, paper?
Oh, yeah, we got the paper, paper, we didn't have any, uh, new ass of paper.
Uh, dump trucks, uh.
Is your new drone in there?
No, no, should I, well, go ahead and have that. Number just went up a little bit. Yeah, so a variety of items. We had, bought the paper on a three-year payment. Um, this will be the third payment on the paper. As Max mentioned, uh, there is, um, what's called a travel loader, picking up materials off the road and then be able to put them into a truck as you drive down the roadway. Ours was built in nineteen eighty-six, I think. Um, we've replaced many parts many times. Now it's got, has to be replaced. We put it off several years. Uh, cup, looks like snowplows, um, place in a tractor. One of our tractors that we use mowing and snow plowing also with, Drags Maintainer also. And then, um, tandem axle dump trucks and one light duty pickup truck replacement. So that's the list of items. It's not all out of CCD, but.
Do we want to, uh, it's up to the council whether we vote on that one.
Yeah.
This is CCD, do you have other things in it to do it all at once?
Yeah, I would like the CCD then.
What would you rather, Debbie?
Yeah, I'll make three.
Doesn't matter. Our, I mean, it's one.
We've approved two other lines in here, so we might as well.
I move that we approved line nine one seven nine and fund eleven thirty-eight as submitted.
It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve, uh, this line in CCD. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say why say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
No, yeah, that was maybe fifty-nine hundred bridge projects in general. So you wanna do one of the bridge projects first?
Well, Jewel is here, and I know some of your bridge projects are on this A R P project list. I don't know if you want to go ahead and do that, to discuss some of these bridge projects, see if you can take them out of our budget.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Go ahead and do the A R P.
Before we get too far, I know that Jerry Bush has been a regular caller to our office, and I advise him if he wanted to know more about what was going on, that he could come and talk at the council meeting and he was advised to come to that.
Jerry did show up, uh, Tuesday, and I let him know that there'll be highway, would be open today on Thursday. So, I mean, so Jerry, if you wanna say something for just a couple of minutes, so you, and, and you're more than welcome to say something. That way you don't have to stick around the whole, much longer if you don't want to, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, come up to the table.
Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, I just really wanted to find out, uh, I came in here late evidently. Um, hearing about the gravel road conversions, and I wanted to find out a little bit more about that. Sounds very complicated, all the money's how you're giving it up, and, um, I understand it's, it's complicated. But I'd see no progress, at least where we're at, uh, on our gravel road. I've been up there before, I've bug Nick quite often, uh, asking questions. Our, our gravel road, we just, and I, when is Boone County gonna get turned? That's my question. When are, when are they gonna start doing something besides everybody else's getting stuff? I question the costs involved in, in purchasing graders or renting them and the operation, the labor, the maintenance, the fuel, all that compared to, as he says, paving it from Chickensville, what I used to know. I guess that, not that anymore. It would seem that it, it would be very close and maybe a lot less hassle. To pay for, to have some type of program in place. The way I understand, there's two or three roads down a year. Boone County has over three hundred miles of gravel roads. That's, that's hard to accept. Taxes keep going up, and we live on an awful, awful gravel road. And I know that other people would have the same issue. I've got a write-up I'd like to submit to whoever, uh, so I don't take up a lot of time here, but I ask questions and I have. Trying to understand how everything works with the budgeting and where all this stuff goes, so.
Does your information include where you're located?
Pardon me?
Does your, does your information that you want to submit, does that include your address, the road you're, you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to submit that to us, I'll take it.
Submit to you?
Okay.
Um, so, that, that's all my questions. I just wanna find out if there's a plan in place. And I know there's a lot of other people that are in the same situation, three hundred miles gravel roads. And it just seems like nothing ever gets done, or if it does, it's a snail phase.
And I, I let Jerry know, so I live on gravel road. I kinda like my gravel road, but it keeps a lot of traffic off. But I understand people who, who doesn't appreciate it, but.
Well, I've been up to this meeting before, and as I said, besides my military service, I've, I've been out there since nineteen sixty-four. So, six years ago. So we've lived out on this gravel, pretty much, for entire life, my whole family. And, um, just nothing ever gets done. Uh, the, it's costly, it's unhealthy. And I say costly, just the ripples in the road where people fly down their own, and had tees or curbs. They hit their brakes and get their gravel back. Shake your car to death. Have grass and weed growing in the road coming in, creeping in. And, and then when, when they grade it, it creates even more of a dust. And even though, the thing I can't understand, our taxes keep going, which I know that's everything else does. I understand that. But I'd like to hear, I'd like to see and understand what, what's in place to combat or to, to take care of some of this. That some attention be given to the gravel road, other than. Additional to Boone County. Boone County, three hundred gravel piles of gravel road, it's incredible.
Nick, how much would it cost to have all of the gravel roads?
Uh, that's an astronomical cost. So the, the pave all the roads is probably not the solution anyway. There's gonna be some roads that, like Kenny mentioned, they don't want paved. People aren't passionate about it, little amount of traffic, and they like the, nobody driving on them, or people not using them, slows traffic down. So all of them, not really put a lot of time in what we would do if we paved them all. To pave them all, even on the forty-seven that we have, that people have submitted applications and petitions, you're still in several millions of dollars. I mean, it would just be a lot of money. So what we've done is ask for it in the budget, but also include some in the bond funds. Uh, we've paved about twenty-two miles of road, I think, in the last eight or ten years. Over that time span, we have paved roads that, that had been requested through the, the process. Um, we included seven and a half miles of road in, in the bond funds previously, in the twenty twenty bond funds. Intend to include more roads, the higher scoring roads in, in the bond funds going forward. But we have so many small structures and bridges that need funding too. Um, it's an overall shortfall. The, the challenge that we run into, we have a lot of conversations with, there's more than just Jerry saying the same thing. Um, is, you know, how and when is the right time to do all of these roadways? And we have to take care of what we have. And we've got three hundred miles of roads and we have, you know, a total amount that we spend on the budget in, in gravel roads, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in stone and gravel, and about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the grader leases. So if we leave people out of everything, seven hundred, you know, you could do the math. Um, that's gravel roads for an entire year. Blacktop roads, four, five million dollars.
What's the average cost per mile in maintenance years? The average cost.
To convert a road, um, we use a number that's probably too low, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a mile. Um, we put down actually a layer of asphalt, give it the modified asphalt. Um, formerly in still many counties, in very rural areas, do a chip seal over the top, it's a real thin layer. Doesn't last very long, continued maintenance costs then start to multiply over several years.
They did some chip sealing and it fell apart. It was a lot more expensive to come back and do the repairs.
That's, that's it, you can't cut corners.
Not everyone wants this, did you say there's forty people who are requesting, or forty miles?
No, so we've done it per road segment. They can submit an application and then petition, get all the landowners on the road that want to be in support of it. It helps their score, it doesn't mean it won't get done.
Yeah.
Um, and there's been, oh, there's, right now there's forty, but that removes all the previous ten that we've done, um, that people have submitted application. That's just since twenty eighteen. You go back to nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty, I have people call me all the time, I tried to get this road paid for fifty years. Uh, so that's just what we currently have, is forty, it's a little over forty applications.
Application, how many miles are those forty applications?
Um, I don't have that many miles to see exactly how many miles that adds up to, but they're almost all more than a mile long, so.
With this, I vaguely remember like years ago there being a discussion that we could get, like local businesses, to like help contribute to some of this, is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, so we had, uh, at a time, the, the company wanted to relocate and it was gonna impact a gravel road. And they provided all the materials to convert the gravel road, they took away the cost that the county was going to incur. Um, that did, that did happen, it has happened on another project. Uh, there was a business that was gonna be locating and their property was adjacent to gravel road. And they paid for the cost of converting that gravel road as part of their development process.
Are there any other, like, businesses that we can identify that could help with that?
Um, typically it's not going and asking for money, it's when they are needing something or changing their operations or generating a lot of traffic and would then impact the residents, like, hey, they need to be responsible for those costs.
Would new businesses or people coming in, is what you're asking.
What's the length of time it takes to convert a gravel road a mile?
So that's a kind of a vague question. As far as the actual work that happened, in a couple of weeks, we actually laid the pavement. We had to do a lot of prep work to get a road. He mentions the narrow, you know, the narrow road with grass growing on, we've got to do base stabilization, gotta widen it, how to do ditches, cut trees, things of that nature. So it's, we try to get them selected a year in advance if we can, so we can do it with our own operations to get the road repaired.
Have you got any figures on, on a ten-year period, what you spend on a mile of gravel road and a mile of paved road?
So per mile cost, I haven't broke down, but in that number I just gave about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's three hundred miles of gravel roadway.
That's counting the graders and the, and the operators and the gravel.
That's not the operators, that is just the output cost of the rocks and the, and the graders. It doesn't include the maintenance on the graders, just the capital cost. Um, if those guys weren't grading gravel roads, we'd be crack filling, we would be doing something else. They would be, and they only work grading roads heavily in spring and fall is the main time. So it's not an all year round, like they, they tell us.
It's really unfortunate, we're dealing with, with something that hasn't been addressed with the program through the years and it's really hard to catch now. So it's gonna take time, and I grew up on a gravel road and that road's still gravel. Um, so, you know, we, we are trying to get something in place so the, the problem can be addressed. But it is a slow roll and it's an elephant to eat. And unfortunately, budget restrictions just don't allow for any more aggressive approach right now.
So what's, what we're seeing on gravel roads, and I haven't explained to him and many others, we have traffic out of baseline that people couldn't believe. And we are seeing traffic numbers sail. Uh, the Amazon deliveries, FedEx, those are things that all happen. But now as we continue to see the population grow, we're gonna continue to see more traffic. Construction projects around the city, we've gone from roads that were getting thirty and forty cars a day to getting a hundred cars a day. Hundred cars a day on a gravel road is not fun.
No.
That's because of the new bus, that, so that's what I'm wondering, like, because of these new businesses coming, they may already be here, but it's increasing travel on these gravel roads. I'm wondering if we can reach out to any of that, like Amazon, if it's because of deliveries?
Amazon literally had a gravel road right outside of their site, had a traffic signal in Albert S White, four fifty east is gravel. Um, and it was a traffic signal and then a gravel road. So it's absolutely having an impact. How does the county make anybody contribute when those agencies are within a municipality and they're getting brought into the development process?
That's what I'm saying, I think it, I think it's back along.
We can ask.
That's, that's what I'm saying, maybe we can just ask.
I, I would, I would say this, sir, one, thank you for, for coming. Uh, two, if you get your letter to President Hage.
Yeah.
I've sat down with, uh, Nick and other constituents. I think also, just so you know, just from a understanding standpoint, and I'm sure Nick has probably done it, just what the process is. And it helps that you and your neighbors, to Dan's point, it's a lengthy process. But the education piece is probably the most critical. That way, I don't want you to feel like you're wasting your time or worrying, going, you're the most important component. How to maybe help improve your chances of getting moved up on the list. Um, I think that probably helps with a little more advocacy from those around you, if I'm not mistaken. Nick, maybe getting more letters of support and others trying to help you move up on the list. Maybe the counter revises with Nick, what that process looks like to improve, um, you know, increasing those chances. But budget constraints are one thing, and I think you said it earlier, you don't want us to raise taxes because that will be the alternative. And you've already said the taxes have been raised enough and this council's done that, tries to do a good job of nothing.
But we do appreciate you coming to you.
Thank you.
If I could take, take your, your letter and stuff.
Thank you. I, I did have the petition signed a few years ago by everybody on the road, by the way. Except I didn't get all the farmers who built with their, to farm the ground.
Right.
I didn't think about it, I, I wasn't told I had to get their signature until after the fact. But that just didn't seem fair, why would they want that road? Why would they sign it? They don't put them on that road, do they?
Something to your point, if you asked them, say, hey, this is a benefit for me and my family from a, just a pure health standpoint, maybe they would, and then.
Well, they have a lot of farmers that do something.
Yeah, yeah, they, they would say, hey, we want to be a good.
And that's values, isn't it, land?
Yes. Besides all that, why do we, why can't we do something systematically?
I do want to point out that we did increase gravel road conversions for the, for next year's budget, for your request. And I guess I would ask, my hope is that food and beverage increases, especially with the counties increasing, that we be more cognizant of this in future years with budgeting that, that maybe this is something we need to be looking at increasing as those dollars are increasing too.
That sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. But the catch is, is you pave more roads and you'll have a higher maintenance cost.
You gotta preserve them, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Because potholes are just as unpopular.
Montgomery County tried to do a bunch of chip and seal thirty years ago and you can't drive down the roads.
They're not in good shape. We have a lot of counties that we hear from that say the same thing, that we had a big push, let's go chip seal all the roads. And they've got themselves a financial pinch. And once you've turned it to paved road, going the other way, highly unpopular.
Oh, my, you can't throw.
I just gotta mention that because I heard there's some counties that went the other way.
There was a lot of counties after two thousand eight that started going the other direction, which is unpopular.
I already told my good if you want.
Look, look, they have a meeting when we come back, they have a heater.
Henderson's done a good job.
Yes, it's doing.
Well, they passed, they asked to pass the tax, the business tax. Yeah. That was funny. And the cost was.